On Facebook. All right, we're ready. We'll start the meeting with a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody, to the August 6th, 2020 Village Board Meeting. All board members are here. And can we get started by with a motion to approve the Village Board meeting minutes from July 16th, 2020? Second. Questions, changes? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. All right, move on to citizens' comments. Actually, we're going to start out with always one of the nice things that we do every year, and that's the presentation of the 2019 Officer of the Year. So Chief Lefenchek, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make sure Bob Thibault can hear me. Bob, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can't see. I probably wasn't on here.
We have a blank screen for you. You've never looked so good, Bob.
I know. That's my best side.
Hey, there he is.
Yes.
We got him now. Very good. Thank you, Mayor. You know, with the COVID pandemic that's gone on, I announced at a departmental meeting some time ago, as all the board members, as all of you know, and for the members of the public that might watch this at some point, our Officer of the Year award is not something that I hand out as the chief. It's actually something that all the members of the department vote upon, and they take into account the officer's performance over the last 12 months for the 2019 year. And I was hopeful that our board, Village Board, would be able to meet, we would be able to present this in person in front of all of you like we traditionally do. But that obviously isn't happening, and we wanted to make sure that Bob was recognized. And, you know, I did note in my letter to Bob some of the comments that the officers made when they nominated him. And Mayor, if you'll give me the opportunity, I'd just like to mention two or three of them. You know, one of the comments that they talked about was Bob is hands down the department's best interviewer and interrogator and investigator, and he's always wanted to help. And I think a common theme that's been consistent is Bob's willingness to step up and assist when needed in almost anything. Almost every single nomination that mentioned him mentioned how he's a team player. And I think that speaks well to his commitment to the profession, commitment to the organization, and commitment to help the officers that he works with. One of the officers actually said that Bob solved most of my cases without me even asking for his help, again showing that Bob took the initiative and was working cases. There's not too many people around the village that Bob doesn't know. If there's a question about something, he's the guy I go to and say, hey, you know this person, you know what's going on with them? And Bob's got things locked down on that day shift. He knows a lot of people. They know him. We posted it on our Facebook page today. We took a picture outside, him and I, with him being presented the award. And there's been a couple dozen, two or three dozen comments already on Facebook congratulating Bob. Many people indicating, a couple people indicating, geez, I just had a dealing with him recently went very well. A lot of people congratulating him. And I would certainly echo the comments of the officers that nominated him and would say that they selected very wisely based upon his performance and offer my congratulations to him for a job well done there.
Thanks, Bob. Congratulations, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just, it never ceases to amaze me that I see you everywhere. I go down a street and I see you talking to somebody on the side of the road, and an hour later, I'm on another side of the village, and you're out in the yard talking to somebody. And your presence obviously is noticed around the village. People know who you are. And matter of fact, I saw a picture, I think it was about a week or two ago, where you were up at Dave Arthur, who had the, his smoker was smoking like crazy, and the neighbors were calling the police and the fire department. There was Bob taking care of that one. It's always nice when we can honor one of our police officers, and it's nice to hear the nice things. Mike had, old Mike, and just, we really appreciate what you do for us. So thank you very much, and congratulations. And you had a chance to say anything if you want.
I'll just thank you for the opportunity. I mean, I really enjoy serving the village and the people of the village, and I'll continue to do so for at least a few more years.
I hope so.
Absolutely.
Now, I am disappointed because we get no cake.
Yeah, well, we could send you a cake.
This is usually when my tongue ends up blue for the rest of the meeting. But again, this is always one of the highlights of the year, because I know Mike will always emphasize, this is not a popularity contest. It's not something he picks. It's the other officers, and it speaks well for our village. Nice job.
Well, thank you, sir.
Anybody else got a comment?
Thanks for your service, Bob. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Doesn't mean you're getting away with anything, guys. If you're speeding, he's still gonna stop you.
I don't walk that fast, but he always passes me by.
There you go. All righty, well, congratulations, and we'll move on with the next part of our meeting. And thanks for joining us, Bob.
Yep, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Bob. I'll talk to you soon.
Yes, sir.
All right, bye now.
Bye.
We'll move on to the Lions Club proposal. We did talk about it in the work session a little bit. Has anybody seen it? Does anybody know what I'm talking about? Did anybody bother to open it up?
Yes.
I mean, I think if you look, I'll show it, I don't know if people can see what I've got there. But it's, you can see that the one on the left is one where you put a wheelchair in it, wrap them in.
You're too close.
So a child in a wheelchair doesn't get left out. And then the other one, the other one's like a car seat almost to let them in. And then this is what they look like when they're on the swing set. And as we talked in the work session, you know, Steve, Steve thought it was nothing but a positive for the, for Community Park. I agree. They will work with Steve. All they're asking for tonight is for us to say, we think it's a good idea, it's a good project. I don't think we need to take a vote, or do we? I mean, we just tell them, go ahead. But then we'll contact Steve and get more specific about locations, and I think they're gonna ask him for a little help designing the layout of where it goes and that type of stuff. And I think they have a target date of, they're hoping by next May, it'll be ready to use. They're talking about trying to get the equipment ordered. It doesn't, it's not something you order today, and it's here in two days. I think it's probably special made because they don't have them just laying around. April would be like a groundbreaking site work. Installation would start, and then sometime in May, the equipment would be ready to use. I just think, I'm very proud of our parks. I know Bruce is a big advocate for parks. I know Steve is always very supportive of us doing work in the parks. And anything we can do to make our parks just that much better, you know, we have a beautiful overlook now going down to Community Park, the trail around the park. If you go down there on the weekend, that is kind of the place to be. I mean, there's a ton of people down there with mostly people putting boats, kayaks, and that kind of stuff in the water. But Community Park, my wife and I used to joke it a hidden gem of the village, because nobody really knew it was there. I think we've kind of gotten past that, where people are starting to find out Community Park is there. Has anybody got any thoughts? Bob, is this something we can just say, give them an okay? Do we need to have a resolution to?
Yeah, but they're adding, they're adding something to village property, so it would be good, I think, to have a resolution. Plus, I think you could also use the resolution to indicate the appreciation of the board.
Yeah. Anybody have any more comments, questions before we would proceed? Can I get a motion to okay Lions Club plan to add two special needs-type swings to the park? It would include probably some parking and a walkway from the parking to the facility with the attendant opening date being in May, and with the thanks from the village for something that we think's a great project. Could I get that motion?
I may.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Reposed? Carried. And I will contact Jack Schmidt, or yeah, Jack Wosinski, not Jack Schmidt. One of my old police buddies. And give them, I'm sure they'll be excited, because they're very excited about this project. Let's see, move on, on the agenda, the trustees' comments. Andy?
Agenda only.
Bruce?
Am I muted?
No.
No, okay. No, I have nothing except the agenda.
Okay.
The agenda's fine.
Okay. Ruth? Zico?
Agenda's good for me.
Megan?
Just the agenda.
Mark?
You go back to alphabetical order. I'm last again. I understand you have an executive session scheduled for this evening, so I'll tack onto that and give an update to the board on the status of contract negotiation during that session.
Okay, so executive session is item D underneath Business for Contract Update, and then item E is, you know, some more contract issues. That's the way I can think of saying it. Okay. And it only lasts tonight, because I go on my screen, you're the last one in line. Otherwise, you might have been first. You've probably used that all through school, being the last kid to get your seat and...
Oh, yeah, I'm used to that.
Okay. Your mayor's comments. Just a couple things. O'Reilly's is open. They haven't had a grand opening, but they are open. Greg tells me that the first apartment building on the Phoebes Island Apartments is open. People have started moving in. Long awaited. Good news. On my Wednesday session with Kelly Hoffman, one of the questions that she got from somebody was the status of Shacksboro. Was the, is it open or not? So I sent Sue McManus a message. She replied that it's still closed to the public. If you have any, I suppose if you were looking to buy something that you had seen in there, you could email her. They might work out a plan to get you that, but at the current time, they are not open. They're kind of like the senior center. They're gonna be one of the last ones to open, because most of the people over there are seniors, and they're the ones that we gotta worry about mostly. For the people out there to know, court is opening up Wednesday, 3:30 to 6:00. Have to call the court ahead of time to make sure that it's okay for you to go, because you have to have an attorney. That's how you get in the door. There will be a screener. There will be a bailiff, a police officer there to help enforce masks, social distancing, how many people can be in the building at a time. This is a trial run. They're not sure how it's gonna work, and if it doesn't work well, they're gonna go to virtual hearings, and people will be having a hearing like we're having right now. They've done some of the work that you have to do for having an in-person session. There's some disinfectants stations in the hallways now. There are sneeze guards up at the front of the room. They're gonna have to spread out so that nobody's within six feet and that type of stuff, but they're prepared for that. I don't know that I would use the word excited as far as the court people. I think they're just concerned not knowing what's gonna come in the door germ-wise mostly. And I don't blame them. It is a scary time. And we will be working. Greg had requested that, would it be possible to have an in-person planning board meeting on the 25th? And I know that Steve was supportive, and I think it's probably time for them, but we got some work to do to get ready for that. Bob has given us a list of things, and we've got to have checklist for people to answer when they come in and they sign their names, so that if somebody on that list gets sick, we can track it back to all the people in that room, you know, that we can make sure that they're not sick. The social distancing again for that meeting. Everybody will have to wear masks during the meeting, have disinfectant available. And then one of the big issues is we're gonna have to get the room cleaned up after the meetings. Obviously, if we clean it up after one meeting, we wouldn't have to clean it before the next meeting, but we wouldn't after that one was held. So we may have to talk to our cleaning crew. We may have to look for somebody who's looking for part-time work, who wants to be a screener and be our post-meeting disinfectant person. It's not like we can just snap our fingers and say, let's do it. There are some things we have to do. Last thing, you may have seen some signs down at the square, look like election-sized signs. That's a haiku contest. You don't know what haiku is? It's a Japanese poetry that has three lines, five syllables in the first line, seven syllables in the second line, and five in the third. And it's generally about nature, outdoors, that type of stuff. And the Center for the Arts had a contest. They asked people, I didn't see the original notice for it, but I guess people on Facebook or mailed in their poems. The group picked the best, I think it was 36 people. They made them into signs and posted them on those election, you know, those metal things that stick in the ground. You can walk through, there's two signs, which unfortunately are tied to trees, which is not the best way to do it. But I think the directions on how to vote are on those signs. You read them all, and you pick the ones you like the best. Hi, Bill Butler. Yankees are behind, by the way, Bill. So the haiku thing, it's kind of cute. I think the nice thing is that people are trying not to just sit still and do absolutely nothing. I mean, I'm not a haiku fanatic, but I think some people probably find it kind of cute. And, you know, I read a couple of them, they were actually not too bad. So we've had people, Mo sent me a message the other day, what are all the signs in the square? We know about it. There was supposed to be some coordination that, a little missing on their part, but signs are up, so if you're walking through, good chance to realize that people were taking a step to do something out of the box a little bit. And I think that's all I've got.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Trustee Wilder here. I have a question, going back to one of your first items with the apartments opening behind Phoebes Island. That would be the apartment building closest to the Dunkin' Donuts, is that correct?
Right, it's the second one.
Okay, it's the other one. Do we know, I don't see Greg on the call tonight, but do we know the status of the trail, whether it's connected from the Yavitch Trail portion to the area behind the apartment buildings? I know that was a requirement of their process during the planning board review. They elected to put some of the trail in, and I'm just wondering if it's been inspected and if that's actually connected yet.
It is connected. I've walked it several times myself.
I don't think it's done, the final coke's not done, right, Steve? Is it still stone? You're muted. It's fine. No, it's done. It's an asphalt surface, along the waterway, past, if you remember, there was a retaining wall. It runs past the retaining wall. It goes past the second building, and it turns to the, kind of to the northwest and goes up to their street. Now, there's not a connection at their street yet. There'll be a sidewalk across, and it'll go up to the Lock Street sidewalk, but it takes you right up to within 35, 40 feet of the sidewalk, the Lock Street sidewalk.
Ultimately, that trail is supposed to connect all the way to the end of Lock Street, correct?
No. No, it comes up right about at Margaret Street, and then the sidewalk is the access beyond that.
Well, I'd be interested to know, I thought the planning board documents showed it going all the way down, because we had envisioned at one point connecting and going around Phoebes Island. Maybe we could take a look at that, just see what they're obligated to complete.
Yeah, I'll look at it. Okay. Good question, Mark.
Yeah, I think it was gonna run all the way around along the river, but there, but we did want the connection from Margaret Street so people could get down to it. But I do, I agree with Mark. I feel like it was gonna go along the river all the way down to the end.
I was gonna say, we wanted it, but I think James Thrasher was reluctant to do that. I don't know if it fell through the cracks or not. I'll check the, I'll check the planning board's approved drawings tomorrow. That's good. Thanks, Steve. That's the best thing we can do. Thanks, Mark, for asking. All right, we'll move on to department heads. We'll start with our attorney. Bob?
I'll stick with the agenda, Mayor.
Okay. Greg's not here. Village Clerk, Mo.
I just wanted to give an election reminder. It's still scheduled for September 15th, from noon to 9:00 at Village Hall. Absentee applications are available at Village Hall. You could just give us a call, and we can mail you an application. We haven't, I probably won't send out the ballots, well, probably in another week or so, the ballots can start going out. If you had already completed an absentee ballot, those are still valid for the September Otherwise, I think I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Mo. All right, Anna's not here tonight. Senior Center, Ruth?
Hi, just a few things. Want to bring the board up to date. We're doing a lot of activities outside on the grounds, and the weather's been very, very cooperative, so that's been going really well. So in August, just so the folks know as well, the art group is meeting on August 18th at 10:00 a.m. in the pavilion. The book club will be meeting on August 18th at 2:00 p.m. in the gazebo. And Georgia Leah has a concert planned for August 20th at 3:00 p.m. outside. Bring your own chair. Masks are required. Practice social distancing. Also, our librarian is going to have a day on August 25th where she's making books available to people on request, so give us a call, and we'll make sure you get the authors that you like. And Lorraine Melita will get those books out to you. And then on August 26th at 2:00, the senior activity group is doing a drive-up ice cream treat for the folks. It's just drive on up, just like we're doing for the luncheon, and myself and other staff members will have individually wrapped novelty items that the senior activity group is sponsoring. So that's 2:00 on August 26th. And I just want to thank the mayor and Mr. Baldwin, the village attorney, for their work on moving those agreements forward. I appreciate all your time and energy towards resolving that.
We did discuss during the work session your question regarding use of the pavilion or the gazebo for the shower, the drive-up shower. So they actually wouldn't use the pavilion. They would just, I guess if it was sprinkling or something, they could stand there until the next car came. The thought was, most everybody thought it was pretty good. We do think we should have some sort of an application similar to what you would have if you wanted the pavilion at Mercer Park that would hold the village and the two towns harmless if there was damage done, that type of stuff. So if you check with Mo, unless you already have one of those applications, you can go ahead and you can have their shower.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I was trying to get into the work session and have any connectivity issues, so I appreciate you sharing that with me. And Maureen, I will get with you and make sure that I have a document that covers the concerns. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Okay, move on from the senior center to public work. Steve? I'd like to just comment on the opening of the Phoebes Island Apartments. It's quite a milestone, quite honestly. It's a project that goes way back before I even was working here at the village, which was eight years ago. And it was very novel, the idea of a municipality buying a piece of property and marketing it is nothing new, but I think for a village the size of Baldenville to take the step that it did in order to transform that piece of property into what it is and what it will be, I think was extremely, it had some risk associated with it, but it had, it was a challenge, but it was met by the board, and a number of board members are no longer here that initiated and worked on it for years. So I think there's a lot of congratulations to go out to everyone who worked on that project, and it's, I think it's a terrific thing to see that open up. And like I said, it's a milestone to a transition to a street that has really improved substantially since, you know, eight years ago. We invested in it when we did the project down there. We added the curving, the sidewalk, new surface. We've got the, you know, it's a save-the-rain project with a permeable asphalt in the parking area. We've greatly improved our elements, and this, what I would call a private-public venture is doing a lot there. So I think it's a, it's a great thing. It would be a, I think Bruce and Mark particularly, been around longer than most of the others on the board as far as the village. That's an area that if you talk to people who live in California or Florida and haven't been here in 50 years, Lock Street will have a whole different meaning to them. I mean, Lock Street was, that's where the dump was at the end of the street. That's where the DPW was, you know, kind of piles of stone and that type of stuff. Some of the houses were less than exciting. And in addition to the new stuff that we, that's being built, people on Lock Street have taken some steps to upgrade their properties. And Lock Street is no longer, you know, the other side of the tracks, type of thing. If I could say something like that without offending people who used to live there, it was not a place where people had nice thoughts about, and particularly because the end of the street was the dump. And, you know, that's all been changed. That's now going to be one of the nicest, as you hint at, Steve, it's gonna be one of the nice spots in the village. I mean, it's right on the water with all the birds that we have around, the swans and the geese and the ducks and the herons and the eagles. What a great place to live, you know, to sit out on a balcony and watch the river go by. Great spot. So I know Mark was a real driving force when he got on the board and really pushed hard to make that the best project it could be, and my hat's off to you, Mark, and thank you very much for all the hard work you put in. I know it was special to you. And Joe Saracini had a lot to do with it, and we're very fortunate that everybody had some foresight a few years ago and pushed on with this project. I concur with what Steve has to say.
I appreciate, appreciate that. I will tell you that that is the main reason I got on the board, because I had approached the board when I was not a member. I approached the Village Board with a private developer about acquiring the property and developing it, and there was a lot of reluctance to move forward with the project because of some perceived environmental issues. And we had to go through a process to... And we had to go through a process to really satisfy the concerns about some of the potential environmental issues. And they were picked off one by one and we were able to put that on as a marketable entity. But when I was not successful with my own pitch, there was an opening on the board and Joe Saracini said, "Well, why don't you come on the board and kind of educate us because it's a little bit of concern about it?" So that was an extensive process, finding out what the canal was filled with and and doing the drilling and doing a whole bunch of other tasks to kind of satisfy the environmental end. But, yeah, I'm happy to see this part of it done. My main question about the connectivity of the trail is to give the people in the apartment buildings the opportunity to come into the village and make sure that part's done. As they build out the remainder of the properties down along the roadway, I think we will want to have a trail that also provides access for people to buy the private properties and the mixed properties in between. So hopefully that moves along aggressively and we can fill out the rest of it. I know they've been doing grading and improvements down there, so I hope that's part of their plan.
Well, and it is interesting that you mentioned filling in the canal. I would guess that three-quarters of the people who live in the village now don't realize that that property was where the old Baldwin Canal came right through the middle of it. In the, back when there were, you know, tobacco warehouses and all kinds of warehouses along that strip. You know, it's just a completely different look now, but for some of us, knowing the history, it's a real positive step. I'm excited about it. I would think we're going to see some people very happy with the prospect of living down there. So again, for everybody that had anything to do with it, hats off. Great job.
I think that the transition of that piece of property is as significant as the development of Paper Mill Island. They're right on the same caliber. Great project, great effort by everyone to get it to where it is.
You're right. All right. Anything else, Steve? You all set? Chief? Anything?
Mayor, I would just echo those comments about Lock Street. When I started here 33 years ago, I can very safely say that our call volume on Lock Street was probably the heaviest of any street in the village. And now our call volume there is nearly nonexistent. So there wasn't a deputy or a trooper that worked in the area that didn't know where Lock Street was and didn't know the problems associated with it. You knew that if there was a call on Lock Street, it was nothing good back in the day that you're referring to. And not 50 years ago, because I wasn't here then, but certainly when I started 33 years ago, that was the case. So all the comments that have been made and I think trustee Dryden, it was Mayor Dryden back in the day when some properties started to be purchased along that strip. So to Steve's point, it's been a lengthy process. It's been a long process. But the foresight that was there by people in the past is now starting to bear fruit. And the village is going to reap those rewards for many years to come. Other than those comments, Maureen, I have nothing unless there's questions.
Very good. Okay. We will move on to new business. Can I get a motion to appoint Joanna Taylor as an election inspector for the September 15th, 2020 village elections from noon to 9:00 p.m.?
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right.
Earlier, we had already appointed election inspectors, but one of them had to step out for medical reasons, so that is why the late appointment.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Mo. Item B, can I get a motion to appoint Alexis Pitcher as a screener for the Baldwinsville Justice Court with an effective date of Wednesday, August 12th, 2020, at a rate of $11.80 an hour?
Second.
Questions? Comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item C, a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an amendment to the village sewer infrastructure improvement contract with Anadogut County for reimbursement extending the term through December 31st, 2021.
Will make that motion. Trustee Wilder?
Second.
All that does is extend the term of the contract. There's no change, as I understand. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All righty. Any other comments before we go into executive session? Anything, any other business that needs to be addressed? All right, what we will do is we will just stay on here, but we will get off live and stop recording and have executive session. So anybody who isn't involved with either the parks thing, chiefs thing, we'll see you later. Shep, you can't go.
I'm still here.
All right, one, two, three, four, five.
You'll need a resolution.
Huh?
A resolution to get into executive session.
Move, we go into executive session.
Oh. All right, both, two executive sessions, both for contract updates. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Bob. We'll go into executive session. Let me get off the live part.